I'd like to call our meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda, item D with Special Education and Related Services Comprehensive Plan, Continuous Improvement. Appendix P., Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Good evening. And I think I can report that, in sad news, that the USA did lose two to one. We were following it and knew everybody was doing that. Kind of a cool thing. I mean, sitting here, we've got a big screen TV. I mean, I think for future board meetings, we need to take, you know, we need to have something up there like that.
Well, watch madness is, you know, that's going to be important.
I think so. But again, thank you for the opportunity tonight to come and talk about special education for just a moment. I've got Ms. Askew here, who's going to make a very brief presentation about some of the things that we're doing. I wanted to preface that by telling you that for the past few years, we've been looking at our special education department and realizing that there were changes that need to be made. And had the great opportunity this past year, when we changed some leadership, to do some restructuring and to get a fresh set of eyes with a brand-new director that we're real proud of that came in and she's been real good to work with, with me and the rest of my division, and has fit seamlessly in. Also with instruction, that we've worked together with instruction, to make sure that special education is not just its own entity, but an actual part of our school system. And we're real proud of some of the strides that we've made. What I've asked Ms. Askew to do tonight is come in and outline some of those changes that we're looking at. One of the things that was a problem that you all have recognized as a problem in our special education delivery has been the fact that our staff development has been lacking, especially with regular ed teachers and even with some of our special education teachers. So we've needed, we understood we needed to shore that up. We also were looking at the fact that we had staff, in many cases, that were deployed in not the most effective of manners. In fact, our caseload, which you're looking at, special education teacher to student, is lower by far than the state average. And we looked at that, and where it's not necessarily a bad thing that you have a low ratio, it's the fact that you are sacrificing the staff development because you can't afford to pay the staff development because you have basically thrown staff at all of your problems. And we recognize that and wanted to make some changes, and we have done so without reducing our, without sending anyone home, without eliminating any current positions. We've eliminated some positions, but not staff, because we were able to handle this basically through instruct, through attrition. And Ms. Askew is going to talk about that in just a moment. But again, we recognize those were problems. And we also recognize that one of the issues that we found, and again, having the fresh set of eyes coming in, is that while the response to instruction, which was originally called Response to Intervention Model, the RTI model that you all have heard about for a number of years, is intended to assist children before they're identified, it is not intended to delay identification of children who need special education services. And in some cases, we found that that was, in fact, what was happening. And it was inadvertent, but because special education was housing RTI as opposed to instruction, that was one of the big concerns, because response to instruction is good instructional practice. But it should not be used clearly in special education to not identify children, to delay identifying children that require specialized services that we provide during our special education program. So without me saying much more, I'm going to allow Ms. Askew to come up and make her presentation. Then if you have any questions, certainly Ms. Askew and I will be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Hayes and other members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. And I also want to thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to come to work one year ago with New Hanover County Schools. I've thoroughly enjoyed myself. I want to start with a quick overview that our, the area that I'm going to, the areas that I'm going to speak on are the strategic supports to schools, the professional development that Dr. Holliday already mentioned, the partnership with instruction for RTI that Dr. Holliday also mentioned, and the equitable staff distribution. In the strategic supports to schools, having significant discussions with schools and then having an opportunity to analyze our liabilities regarding special education programming. Schools have identified a need for additional supports to build teacher capacity, to increase our teacher skills in the areas, specifically in behavior support and curriculum coaching or support. The behavior support needs involve having that area of expertise to come in for additional observation, analysis, intervention implementation, the data collection, and then the reporting, but all of this happening through in-class coaching, side-by-side with teachers. The curriculum support works very much the same way in helping identify what products or resource products need to be utilized in the classroom to benefit specially-designed instruction. Having that training, working with teachers on how to schedule for using those, ordering those materials, because we have to do that in a very efficient way, instructing with fidelity, meaning that we want to be able to use those research-based materials in the way that the research intended, so that we can use those materials to get the same outcome that the research says we will. Because if we buy those materials and don't use with fidelity, we're shooting into the dark trying to see if we're going to get the results we need. The other important part of that is being able to train our teachers to do that helpful formative assessment that informs their daily instruction. Dr. Smith spoke about formative assessment. That's very much a focus between our programs. Having that progress monitoring so that we know whether our students are making those gains and our teachers know whether they need to adjust their instruction midstream. And then, of course, adjusting instruction and then conferencing with students to know whether they're making those gains. The next would be in the area of professional development. Earlier in the school year, we deployed, my department deployed, a staff survey, professional development staff survey, to all of our special education staff to identify the areas that they felt they needed additional skill building. These are the ones that they mentioned specifically and really in no particular order, but these were the ones that we had a strong pattern of need. This would be the behavior strategies for students, especially with autism. Many of our teachers report needing behavior strategies, but especially it was with the area of autism. Along with that, understanding how to create visual schedules for our students with executive functioning needs. Functional behavior analysis, understanding what behavior interventions work for which need. All behaviors occur for a reason. They don't happen in a vacuum. Using research-based instruction, knowing which instructional methods need to be used for which students with different particular disabilities. IEP development, I second this one. Making sure that we understand how to write clear and concise IEPs that actually are related to that student's specific disability and which goals we expect for annual progress. Classroom management, always a hot topic. And then math and reading foundations. We participate with North Carolina State Improvement Project for increasing math and reading skills among teachers across the state, and this is an area where this research-based professional development needs to be utilized to its extent. The next would be the partnership with instruction for response to instruction. RTI implementation now involves our partnership with staff and instruction for the provision of efficient and targeted interventions for those students that struggle the most. And that means we're talking about students who may not have been identified as having a disability, may not need to be identified as having a disability and needing an IEP and needing specially-designed instruction, but having earlier learning needs that need to be addressed via the instructional delivery in the general classroom or in small groups, but not delaying that or having to wait for an IEP before a certain level of services. Having those RTI interventions delivered within general education so that our special education teachers are returning to the role of solely supporting students that already have IEPs as the funding is intended and as federal legislation intends. The next area would be equitable staff distribution. I've spent the better part of the second semester analyzing our student projections for the 14-15 school year, analyzing our caseloads, our class sizes. And Dr. Holliday mentioned really focusing on how we're placing our staff and specifically targeting our staff assignments based on student need. Doing that within a, just a number for special education doesn't truly capture the need for some of our students, because IEPs for, you could have five students in one classroom that all need, you know, a collection of 10 hours a week on their IEP. Another five students in another classroom might need 75 hours. So we have to use a formula based on how much IEP service delivery is needed, and that captures the intensity of the student need as opposed to just student numbers. That's the first point that I wanted to mention. I wanted to also highlight that across the district, not in every school, but across the district, we have an overall increase in autism staff and high school staff. In addition, adding job coach positions for each of the high schools to coordinate the occupational course of study work hours that are a specific graduation requirement for our students on that course of study. And then the calculated staff projections equitably across elementary schools, middle and high schools, with a formula for elementary really based on the intensity of the IEP need, a middle school variable that, it was really based on class size, and I decided to make a merge between the elementary and the secondary formulas for calculation and offer the benefit of whichever works out better for more staffing for middle schools. And then high schools are based on student caseload and class size, which is better for scheduling. In short, the shift of RTI interventions to general education staff allows a reduction of special education elementary and middle school positions overall for our teachers in 16 to 18 teacher positions. And as Dr. Holliday mentioned, this is not a reduction in force. It's not sending any particular staff person home. It's a reduction by attrition. Redistribution of staff for equitable ratios across the district. Reduced high school teacher assistance through attrition, again, no reduction in force. High schools are increasing by teachers and job coaches. That's an area where we didn't see as much distribution of the staffing, and scheduling was very difficult for high schools because of this. Elementary teacher assistants are remaining constant. So in that area, teachers were adjusted, teacher assistants were not.
May I ask you a question, please?
Yes, ma'am.
It seemed to me what you were saying about the redistribution of three or four middle high school teachers and high schools are increasing teachers contradict each other.
The redistribution of the middle and high school teacher assistance through attrition. The second bullet is assistance.
Oh, and the other one's teachers. Okay, thank you.
Yes. The expected outcomes overall, of course, very important to us. Reduced liabilities in the area of compliance, in the area of curriculum, and in the area of behavior. Increased support to our teachers through coaching, and this coaching would happen in the classroom. And we know that we follow research-based interventions for supporting our student learning. We want to follow research-based interventions for supporting our teacher learning, and that happens within class coaching. That's how their skills increase. This allows increased fiscal flexibility for long-range planning. Increased outcomes on state reporting for LRE, for our least restrictive environment, which is an obligation under IDEA, that we place students in the less restrictive environment. The next, increasing responsiveness to apparent concerns for academic and behavioral needs of students. And overall, of course, increased student achievement. Are there any questions?
Board have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Holliday.
It's been a fast year. I don't realize you've been here a whole year. You've been busy.
It's been a busy year. I've enjoyed every minute. Thank you.
Thank you.
She's working for a really good guy, so.
Next item on the agenda.
Ms. Eastep and I on this side of the table are cold.
Is that not insane? Have we ever too been cold?
The line is right here.
Yeah.
Mr. Hance, will you please make a note of that? And Ms. Kavanaugh, in particular, that's very impressive. I think he feels comfortable. Is anybody else cold?
I'm comfortable.
If the line is right here, they're very cold. Can you adjust your thermostat for?
Just this table.
Thank you, Mr. Hance.
Do we have blankets anywhere or anything?
There's spaces on our snuggies.
Yeah, we have to get snuggies, board snuggies for the.
For twice the price.
Next item on the agenda, item nine, superintendent's report.
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Item 10, consensus items. Item A, personnel. Appendix E, Dr. Wilmers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Request the board approve the personnel matters as presented.
Move for approval.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item B, change of school assignments. Appendix E, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board ask that you release these students to our neighboring counties due to the fact that their parents are employed by those school districts.
Move for approval.
Second. Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Next item on the agenda, item 11, under old business. Item A, policy for second reading. Mrs. Nichols.
It is a policy for second reading, 7440, student promotion and accountability. This was presented at the last board meeting, and Dr. Smith answered your questions, but if you have any additional ones before we approve it, she's available to answer. If not, I ask that we approve 7440.
Is that a motion to?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Thank you. Item B, budget priorities. Appendix H, Dr. Markley and Mary Hazel Small.
This will be really brief. We have no budget yet from the Senate or the House. So we did get some guidelines from DPI in terms of what we do in the interim until we have that. That's why we added the January work session so that we can approve that budget. I'll let Ms. Small run through this real quick.
Just wanted to mention that we will be bringing a beginning budget for approval at the work session on the, it says the 16th, but it'll be the 17th. And what that will include will be the state, the state planning budget as recommended with this DPI guidance. They're having us basically start with our original planning allotments slightly adjusted. And the main adjustments are, in the original second year of the biennium, we were supposed to increase class size in grades two and three, and that's neither in the House or the Senate budget, so we're not going to be doing that. And also, no adjustments at this point for any state raises or salary or benefit changes until we know what the final budget is. So the budget I bring to you will basically be sort of a constant budget, and then once the state budget's approved, we'll amend it. The reason it's important to go ahead and approve the budget in July is so that we can, you know, move forward with some of the items that you had originally included in your plan with fund balance, including your property purchase and those types of things. And so the local budget will basically put, the second part of your handout was your original priority request that was talked about during the budget cycle. Anything related to salary is just going to go in a reserve, so no decisions on local salary will be made until the state budget's approved. But this just allows us to approve a beginning budget and then bring it back to you for discussion once we know what the state's going to do.
Okay. Any questions from Ms. Small? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item C, Riceboro boiler replacement. Appendix double A, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Ms. Chairman. This is, this item was approved by the board at the May 13th board meeting. The low bidder, the contractor, has backed out of the contract, so we're awarding this to the second low bidder. It's a slight increase in price of about $1,500. Request that the board consider the award.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions?
Yes, the company that did back out of the contract, is that something normal that happens?
Not particularly normal, but they do, if they run into problems such as workload, which appears that this one ran into a workload issue, because he said he couldn't get it done, he couldn't complete the project in the time required prior to school starting.
So it was not a matter that they underbid and then found out they couldn't do it for that price?
We don't know that for a fact, but no, that's the only, the difference in price is only about $1,500, so I doubt very seriously if that's the case.
Is there a penalty when you do this?
If we had a bid bond, we would keep their bid bond. I don't know that we had one on this particular one. It was only about $80,000 project. But if we had something like a several-million-dollar project that Mr. Anderson would bid as a, as a new school or a major renovation or something like that, we'd have a bid bond and payment performance bond. But we didn't have a payment performance bond on this, but we wouldn't keep that because that's for them to finish the job rather than stopping in the middle of it.
You know, $8,000 to some people is actually real money. We might consider having, you know, bid bonds for all our bids. I mean, because again, they were the low bidder.
We do, we do on a lot of our projects, and the cost goes, I mean, they bid, they build the cost of the bond into the price that they submit us to.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item 12, under new business, resolution to select the design consultant for Blair Elementary School replacement. Appendix I, Mr. Hance.
Yes, Ms. Chairman. Request the board approve the selection of SLFA architects for the Blair replacement. If the bond passes, we'll be replacing Blair Elementary School. And this is not a contract with, this is not the contract with the design consultant. It's simply selecting the design consultant, because we will be cloning Snipes Elementary, and this was the design consultant on Snipes Elementary.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions?
Is this, is this standard procedure to pass a resolution essentially?
Yes.
Prior to even a bond referendum being on the ballot?
Well, we're just selecting the designer so that we can move forward with it. This is not a contract for the designer.
Okay.
It'll be interesting, and maybe you can give me some insight going forward. So we have an architect that has already designed a school that we plan on using as the prototype.
We have, this is the design for, this is Snipes.
Yes.
And we'll use it for the proto, yes, the prototype for Blair.
So.
Not necessarily for College Park.
I understand. We don't know exactly what will be charged for this, do we?
We'll negotiate a price with them, but it should be, since it's a reuse, typically we get a reduced design fee, slightly reduced design fee, but there's still adaptation costs and everything for the particular site. And the main thing that we save is in time. So this will help with the implementation schedule, which is fairly ambitious that Mr. Anderson has put together for the bond if it passes. It will help us a great deal.
So, okay, it'll be interesting when you bring it forward. I mean, it seems to me that, you know, if an architect designs something, and of course we would have purchased those plans, and then they get to charge us all over again nearly the same amount if we reuse it, it seems like great business plan.
Well, there'll be, that is correct, in a way. But we do make changes to the plans. They, each plan, for instance, we built the Freeman Plan at Murrayville and at Anderson, and at each iteration, those plans were changed somewhat, a little bit each time, to make them better. And you do pay less for that. You don't pay the same amount as you would for the brand-new plans. And they do have to work, and they have to present new drawings and new documents based on the site to all of the same agencies and get them approved that they did, that they did before. And they have to produce new sets of documents for that.
How much less would you estimate percentage-wise?
I don't know. I couldn't tell you right now exactly how much less, but a little bit less maybe, rather than a seven or eight percent, it might be a four or five percent. But don't hold me to that, because it will be a negotiated, negotiated fee.
Well, when you negotiate, you can tell them we've had this discussion.
Yes, well, I won't tell them what I said, though.
Well, because I'm also sure that some other architectural firms could probably use the old drawings and, you know.
Well, you will use, they will use some.
Actually, in Porter's Neck, we're using Castle Hay will be the, is what we're anticipating will be the model for that. So that'll be a case of where we've got a design that's worked once, and we'll use it again.
Same, same thing, reuse of the design for the new school in Porter's Neck.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Thank you. Item B, Strategies Unlimited Incorporated Soul Source Resolution. Appendix J, Dr. Smith.
Yes, members of the board, this professional development is designed to enhance the ability of our teachers to effectively teach writing in ELA standards at the elementary level, and I would request the board's approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item C, Ames Soul Source Resolution. Appendix K, Dr. Smith.
All right, thank you. This item, along with the next three items, are actually in collaboration with the Special Education and Technology Department. The Instructional Services Department plans to make available comprehensive PD this summer for our teachers, and the Ames Math Training is one of the options that we would ask for the board to approve for our teachers.
Mr. Chairman, do they want to approve this one motion for the four?
I think we need to go along my lines.
Well, we'll just go one by one, so.
Let me ask a question, if I follow.
Yes, sir.
And this was a question I was going to ask you anyway. I mean, I think we all are committed to professional development of our teachers. Are you saying that these next four are all for the Special Education Department?
No. What instruction has done, along with the Technology Department, is to plan a very comprehensive professional development offerings this summer for our teachers. And so these following items are for general education teachers, but also items that special education teachers can take advantage of as well. We have already held our Technology Institute, and so we've got some additional days planned out this summer with various activities that teachers can be a part of.
So how do we ensure that all of our teachers across the district are receiving the professional development that they need? I mean, I think, and this was, these are individual budget items that we have to approve, and I understand that, but, you know, looking at the numbers, each program had so many slots for so many numbers of teachers, but, you know, I was speaking to some of the other board members, and I think within a large organization, what you would like to see is a plan to cycle teachers through a continuous, consistent professional development such that, you know, maybe one year we make sure all the elementary school teachers do professional development, and then the following year, all the middle school teachers do professional development, and the following year, all the high school teachers do professional development, and then cycle back to the elementary school teachers so that teachers are always having ongoing professional development. Now, looking at this, these all may be great individual programs, but there's only a couple of hundred slots for each of them, and since we have, I don't know, 10,000 teachers in the district, somewhere around there?
Not quite.
Well, how many do we have? I don't know.
We have 3,000.
1,500, okay. Less than 10,000, so there's more, yeah. Big difference in numbers. Still, we're clearly not reaching every teacher in the district with these.
Well, I think you make some great points, and you ask a wonderful question. We are attempting to provide, first and foremost, quality differentiated professional development. And we have surveyed our teachers, and we have actually used these vendors before and found their professional development to be of the highest qualities. And a lot of these offerings, we've got teachers who have asked for these to be made available. Because, you know, if a teacher's going to take their time during the summer to come, and we anticipate all of these slots being filled, then it has to be high quality. We are offering some comprehensive professional development, as you suggested, during the school year. We're working right now on a Singapore math pilot, where we're looking to train all of the K-5 math teachers at particular schools in the Singapore method instructional practices. And then we're going to look to scale that across the district. So we do have right now a comprehensive list of initiatives that we are supporting across the district, and we do have a plan for how we scale that up, how we address the needs of new teachers, and how we retool and revisit those teachers who need additional professional development. So we've struggled with it. One of our challenges is the reduction in the professional development days that are available to teachers. So we have to offer things during the summer, and then also, unfortunately, we sometimes And then also, yeah, unfortunately, we sometimes have to do substitutes during the school day and then also unfortunately require teachers sometimes to stay after work hours. But we are trying to de, design a comprehensive plan.
Are, are these professional development offerings, you say?
Yes, ma'am.
Are they required or are you just offering these as an opportunity and whoever wants to sign up can sign up?
Well, we can't require during the summer because our teachers aren't employed during that time. For some of them, we're offering some snipens because we realize that many of our teachers work during the summer. So we're providing them with an additional incentive, maybe to take a day off of their summer job to, to engage in this. But we feel very confident that these opportunities will be fully taken advantage of because these are the things that teachers have said to us that they want. These are the things that our data tells us that they need.
Well, we were just reviewing, you know, the teacher working condition survey. And one of the things that we noticed was the professional development was lacking. And, you know, my concern is clearly we're offering it and we certainly don't want to, want them to have to cut short their summers. But, you know, that, they need to take advantage of it when it's offered, so.
Yeah. Well, and I'll tell you, we've done the Kagan training, we've done the Ames Math training during the school year and just overwhelmingly, you know, a lot of times you'll get calls when people aren't very happy. It's not often you get calls when they're really excited. And I've had principals to, to email me to talk about how high quality the training was and can we have more of that or can I get some additional teachers involved in that? So that was somewhat of the, the impetus for making sure that we made this available this summer in such a comprehensive manner.
Now, the only issue that I have, and it's not necessarily issue with this particular contract, it's Common Core math training for grades three through eight. I guess this is the Ames education.
Yes, ma'am.
It's in seventy, seven hundred dollars, roughly eight thousand dollars. You know, I'm sure, and I know you're all aware of some of the things that are happening at state level. And I'll just reiterate, you know, Common Core state standards may be going by the wayside. So are we going to be wasting eight thousand dollars on a, on professional development? That may be irrelevant in a month or two.
I would say to you not, based during the information that I've had in, in my experience with the training and in the conversations I've had with our lead math teacher. This training focuses on teaching mathematical practices and standards that I think even in the revisioning of the Common Core will, will still be present.
Still be a benefit to the teachers to have had that.
Yes, yes, sir.
Well, I just want to make sure if we're spending the money that it is beneficial.
Yes.
Yeah, and I don't think, again, just to sort of follow up, I don't think we need like a, I'd just be interested to know what kind of attendance we had over the summer.
Yes.
Because, I mean, you know, I agree this is all very important and we need to find a time that teachers are able and willing to attend. Because, you know, if we have it and they don't come, then it's really not helping them and it's not helping the students. So we need to make it available in a way that they can use it.
Yes.
You have the comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Which one did we just approve? I lost.
Item C.
Okay.
Okay. Item D on the agenda, Kagan Cooperative Learning Soul Source Resolution. Appendix L, Dr. Smith.
I would ask the board's approval for the Kagan Cooperative Learning training.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item E, Centers for Quality Teaching and Learning Soul Source Resolution. Appendix M, Dr. Smith.
I would ask for the board's approval for the Centers for Quality Teaching and Learning Resolution.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions?
Hold on, Tammy.
Hold on one second.
Please hold.
We can pause.
Well, you, you move so fast sometimes. I don't have a, a chance that, there was one that I had a question on. They're in order, so I, I don't think this was, I don't think this was the one. Okay, you can move on.
You don't think that's it?
But you move so quickly sometimes.
And we thank you for it.
Well.
Generally.
Generally.
No more questions?
No more questions?
No questions.
Okay. All those, we do have a motion in a second, right?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item F, Thinking Maps. Soul Source Resolution. Appendix N, Dr. Smith.
Yes, I would ask for the board's approval for the Thinking Maps Soul Source Resolution.
Move for approval.
For approval.
Second.
Are we sure? Any comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Thank you. Item G, Rutherford Learning Group Soul Source Resolution. Appendix O, Dr. Smith.
Yes, the district is committed to both principal and teacher leadership development. The Artisan Teacher Training focuses on building instructional, instruction leadership development capacity. And I would ask for the board's approval for this Soul Source Resolution.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, now this is the one that I had.
Is that the one?
Yeah, this is the one that I had some questions on. This, this is for, as you said, administrators, administrators, principals.
Principals, assistant principals, and central office.
Yes. Okay, and so this is fifty thousand dollars and what is it exactly?
This will be our third year working with Rutherford Learning Group. He actually comes in and does eight days of, of labs with our principals. All principals are required to attend. Last year, we also, he worked with teachers and will expand some teacher work as well. Working with them on going in and doing coaching sessions with teachers and working on instructional improvement. I think you asked our principals, they would give you great feedback on, on what they've learned on this in the last several years. Worked out to, in terms of cost, in terms of staff development, probably one of the most cost effective because when you factor in our principals and APs, it works out to basically a couple hundred dollars per person.
So is it all APs as well?
What's that?
Is it all APs as well?
Yes.
And I, yeah, I hear Mike Rutherford's name quite often that he says or they're using certain strategies. So I think it's been very effective.
Based on the information I've had and my experience, it, it has. We're, we're seeing wonderful things take place in our classroom based on that training.
He'll be doing two of our administrative retreat days on the first of August. If you've got some time, I would encourage you to come in and sit in on those sessions.
We attended his first one and it was.
Yep.
Yeah.
Very informative.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item H, attestation of school improvement team meetings. Appendix Q, Dr. Smith.
Yes, to be in compliance with North Carolina General Statute 115C dash 105.27. I'm presenting before you the school improvement attestations of the required school improvement team meetings. And I ask that you accept these for your review.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item I, addition to the 2014-15 Curriculum Guide. Appendix R, Dr. Smith.
Yes, in response to large numbers of students across the state developing inadequate prerequisite skills for higher level maths, the state has developed a bridge math course that meets the fourth math requirement. And it's designed to alleviate the mathematical gaps and student knowledge. And we would like to see this added to our curriculum course guide for the 1415 school year.
For all high schools?
Yes, we'd like to make it available for all high schools and specifically for Ashley High School.
Move for approval.
The folks from Ashley will be here if you do have questions.
Yes.
So to be specific, it's going to be in every high school, but you're going to focus at Ashley or?
Well, it will be available to all of our high schools and we actually are, there's, there's teacher training that's available this, this summer. But specifically, Ashley has, has shown an interest in the course. So we, we do know that we will have students enrolled at Ashley in the course if the course is approved. However, it will be available for other high schools. So if they don't want to take advantage of it in the fall and they want to get the training in the fall, it would be available for them in the spring. Yes.
So what is the, what is the reason, I mean, why have, ha, is there a gap in terms of Math One, Math Two, Math Three? Is, is that just because of the implementation of Common Core and these students haven't had time to catch up? I mean, I don't understand what the, what the purpose is for this particular course.
Well, I think there are probably a variety of reasons why there might be gaps. And, and some of it could be in the instructional design and how the different standards are organized within the different math curriculums. And this course was created as a response to that. So I think one alternative would have been to go back and look at Math One, Math Two, and Math Three and reorganize those standards because that doesn't come from, from the Count, Common Core. That was decided by the state of North Carolina. But, you know, sometimes when you start down a road, it's kind of hard to back up. And so as a response to that, the state contracted with, I think it's the, well, the Southern Regional Board to design this specific course to address what, those, those issues that we're seeing.
Okay.
So let me ask a question.
Yes, sir.
You know, Lisa probably noticed, and actually Tammy as well, with kids in high school, you know, it's, you, you start knowing as much about school as your, how old your children are, really. But what does this course look like? Is this, you know, if, for, for people who are paying attention, maybe not a lot of people would pay attention to this particular item, but throughout the state of North Carolina, there's, kids are graduating high school and they're going on to either a community college or the university. They're having difficulty in mathematics.
Yes.
And so if I'm, I'm following, this class is a response to that. So what does this course look like? Is it sort of a amalgamation of all the maths or trying to, to bridge them together so that all the previous math classes make sense with one another? So you can actually use it? I mean, what is, what is this course endeavor to do?
Part of this is a response to new, to graduation requirements several years ago. At one point, you needed Algebra One, Algebra Two, and that was your entry into the college. Well, they've added that requirement for that third math and that's how schools also were judged in what they call rigor. And so some of our students were struggling from that jump from Algebra Two, or it's Math Two now, to that next course after that.
And I don't know if, if you would like to respond to that as the, is your teacher here?
Yes, he's not yet trained.
Okay. All right. Well, we've got the lesson progression overview. That's a part of the packet and unfortunately, math is not my area of expertise. So I'm probably not going to very, do a very good job of that. But what has been shared with me is that a lot of times our children come to the higher level maths and they're challenged by the, the higher levels of conceptual understanding that's required of those courses. And so again, this course was designed in response to that based on the, the data that we, that the state has received about the performance of those students.
Is there a motion on the floor, Mr. Chairman?
I believe we have a motion in a second. We were having questions. Any other questions? Dr. Hick, can you do that?
I'm not sure I understand any better, but, I mean, you know.
Dr. Mark, where, where do you, you said that there was, I think you said Math Two was where there were, the transition from Math Two to Math Three is, is where you're seeing some of this struggle?
The state now requires that you have a math beyond Algebra Two for graduation. And that's where we're seeing a lot of our kids, that fourth math, what's, in some respects is that third or fourth math to them is becoming, where they're struggling. And so this is a course designed by Southern Regional Board and meets that state requirement for that fourth math. It allows those students to get that. Right now, it's a limited selection in terms of what's available for that fourth math.
But is this, didn't I read that there was some question about whether or not that universities would accept this as, as the fourth math? They were working with the, the university system?
The community colleges will most likely accept it. The question will be whether four-year institution is accepted.
And when will we have the answer to that question?
Well, I don't have the definitive date on that one. I think this is another issue similar to the conversation that we had earlier with the, the assigning of weighted credits to scores. This has been given to the institutes of higher education. They just have not responded.
But it's also a course for our students who struggle in math, who aren't going to go to, to a four-year, who know they're not going to go to a four-year university, but still need that fourth math for graduation.
Yes.
No, I mean, I, I looked at the, the lesson progression and I, I think some of it is very useful math.
I mean, we would not put a kid in here and tell them this is going to get you to, to a UNC school, but it would get, but it will get you into a community college. It will meet those graduation requirements.
Yes.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item J, visiting international faculty contract. Appendix S, Dr. Smith.
Yes, currently the district is offering language immersion services at Forest Hills Elementary. I would ask that the board approve the contract with the visiting international faculty to continue those services. And I know that Mr. Bullet has an additional comment.
There, there is a clause in there that refers to.
The old Teacher Tenure Act that needs to be updated because of the change, recent change in the law. It refers to tenure and probationary teachers and cites the old statute. I need to update that, so I would ask that the board, if it's inclined to approve this, approve it subject to my changing of that language.
Okay, we can do it with that, realizing that we'll, you'll change it to meet that. Motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
I'll second it. I do have a question. How many teachers is covered? Teachers fee ninety-five thousand dollars?
This is six teachers.
Six teachers.
And is it for Spanish or is it for, what is this for?
This is for Spanish.
Spanish immersion at Forest Hills primarily.
So we have six visiting, visiting faculty for how long? Are they going to be actually teaching or supporting the other teachers?
Actual teachers. For up to, the, they, they can stay for up to three years.
Were we having difficulty finding teachers for that program?
Yes.
Would we anticipate the same sort of difficulty for the Mandarin Chinese?
I would anticipate, yes, but, and again, these are folks that would work with us on that. They've been great partner.
And this, oh, I'm sorry. I was going to say, and this is a continuation of the services that we offer. Right now, we have five of those six teachers, so we're just adding the additional teacher for the additional grade, which will be fourth grade.
So the teachers are employed by VIF services or are they employed by us?
They are, they are employed by us. The VIF is the one who goes out and recruits and finds the teachers.
Okay, so the, so the teacher fee is the finding fee? Is that right? The ninety-five thousand?
I believe it's, it's the fee to sort of support them coming to the United States, but also training and there's more involved than just finding fee. They continue to support them while they're here. And we pay their salary directly.
Okay, so this is on top of salaries?
Yes.
And then we have a program fee?
Yes.
And the program fee is?
The program is curriculum support. And so we have a consultant who's onsite that works with the teachers, that supports them in the PD and also worked with the school as a whole, with the integration of the immersion.
That's the Splash program and that's the school-wide piece that goes with the immersion.
So presumably, I'm sorry, you can, go ahead.
I was just going to say, did we anticipate this being a problem when we, when we first agreed to the Spanish immersion? I mean, were these costs built in or is this, this is an extra cost that we're now incurring? Because we couldn't, we couldn't find teachers for the program?
Program, I mean, when I got here, the program was running, but we needed to go in and revamp the program a little bit. And VIF was a good partner. They've had a track record of doing this in, in other districts. And so it made sense to partner with them to find some of these hard-to-find teachers. The curriculum costs are similar to what we'd have in another school for just the regular curricular cost. This one just happens to support the Spanish program. We wanted to, we chose Splash to give it sort of a, a focus in terms of what we were doing. When, before I got here, the program was sort of all over the map in terms of which direction it was going. And they helped us really refine the program and build it what it, make it what it is.
We're also able to take a state teaching position, transfer it to this contracted services dollar and cover the fee and the teacher's salary for what the state is willing to pay for a teacher. So we're, we're able to leverage that state dollar, so it doesn't really cost locally anymore. It's just, it's just using the state money differently.
I, I guess the, following up on, I'm sorry, on Lisa's line of questioning. This is providing the teacher for the fourth. This is providing the teacher for the fourth grade now as the kids go up a level.
Yes.
So presumably, we'll see a similar item next year as we bring this up to the fifth grade level. But presumably, at some point, once it's gone to all the grade levels, we will no longer need VIF, I would hope.
The, if we're able to hire teachers without the assistance of VIF, then of course, there are no fees associated with that. If we continue to use the services of, of VIF, then we would have to continue to contract with them. And it's my understanding that these teachers are on visas, and so they're with us for only three years, and then they transition out of, of our district and, and the country, and if we continue to use VIF services to recruit and identify and to support our teachers, we, these would be ongoing fees.
The preference would always be, if we could hire somebody who could be here permanently, we would, we would do that. These are positions that we can't find locally or, or state folks to come in and serve those positions.
Yeah, we think we'd be able to find bilingual native speaking Spanish teachers. I mean, I, I understand that there's probably a component of professional development that VIF has provided. But to your point, what I'd like to see is a program that eventually runs itself, and so if, if we could hire our own teachers and let VIF train them in whatever methodology there is so that we're, you know, I think the Spanish immersion program has been successful at Forest Hills, but, you know, I'd hate to see us spending a hundred and fifty thousand extra dollars, and of course, that's going to escalate over the years, you know, in perpetuity. I mean, ten years from now, still approving the same contract for, you know, an outside agency to teach us how to run a program that we've been running for, you know, fourteen years.
You would think you could find them, but they're actually, we have not that many folks out there who have dual language capabilities as well as the elementary certification that goes with it. And if we ever expand to do another language besides Spanish and Chinese, then it's probably going to become even more difficult to find folks who.
Well, I would think Chinese would be particularly difficult, and, you know, maybe Russian would be particularly difficult, but Spanish, I mean, I, I believe you.
Yeah, we have, I mean, we, we find Spanish speakers, but when you get into actually teaching the language and the, the writing skills that go with it, we find that it is very difficult to find people who have that, that skill set.
So the, you said the teachers, these, they come over on a visa?
Yes.
For three years?
Yes.
And then they return to their native country?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
In most cases, they're teachers in their own country, and so they come here, and then they go back to the, teaching in their, in their home country.
And Dr. Markley, I'm hopeful that we're exploring long-term plans so that these fifth graders, when they move over to middle school?
Talking to Mr. Dr. Oates at the middle school, since that's the school that they feed into, he is supposed to, he's working on a, what happens to them when they hit sixth grade?
Because we don't want to stop after all of this.
Well, and then that, that, that sort of begs the question, then, you know, how mu, how much money are we looking at, you know, expanding?
I don't, I don't see a full immersion program in sixth grade. I think some kind of enrichment program in sixth grade probably is the next logical step. Beginning them, let them get their high school credits early in, in terms of Spanish and building that into that particular program.
And then we also have foreign language teachers at that level, middle school and high school, more so than with the elementary.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, approved. Item K. Grant for School Resource Officers. Appendix T. Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, as you recall, we applied last fall for a grant that the state put out to get officers in elementary schools. We got that grant, so this is really not the grant as much as it is the continuation of the funding to fund those eleven officers that we have in our elementary schools now. So this just continues the money we're getting from the state to fund that, so I ask that you approve.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, approved. Item L. Maxim Health Services Contract, 2014, 2015. Appendix U. Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is one of our special education contracts that we use contracted nursing services for, for our students who have severe needs, and these are required by their IEP, so I ask that you please approve this.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, approved. Item M. Public Consulting Group Contract, 2014-15. Appendix V. Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Annually, we ask that you approve this contract with this firm that helps us recover our Medicaid expenses, and without this, we don't believe we could, we actually are pretty sure that we can't recover all the money that we do with Medicaid and the fact that it helps us with auditing concerns that, that, that program requires, so I ask that you approve this.
Second.
Questions?
Every year, I say the same thing, so I'll say it again. Me, it's, it's sort of amazing that we're spending three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to bill Medicaid for services we provide. I mean, I understand how complex, I'm a physician, so I understand how complex Medicaid billing can be. It's just sad that, you know, that the taxpayers are paying money to Medicaid for services that people are entitled to, and in order for us to actually get that money, we're spending three hundred and forty thousand taxpayer dollars to recoup money that we're paying in taxes, and it's just, I mean, it's gross. It's a gross sort of waste of taxpayer resources, but, and of course, we use their proprietary software to do it, so we pay them another fifty thousand dollars to use their proprietary software, which allows them to go in and just pick out the codes that allows them to bill Medicaid, so it's a, people wonder why it costs so much money to educate children in the public school system, and this is a kind of waste that, where we spend a lot of money and get very little for it.
This is the only way that we could afford to have the preschool program when we started it about twenty years ago, because we were able to get funding from Medicare, or Medicaid, I'm sorry. And that has allowed us to serve a great number of children who are preschool age. Some of the most needy children.
No, I agree. I'm not railing against Medicaid. I'm railing about it's so complicated that we have to spend three hundred and forty thousand dollars. We were spending three hundred and forty thousand dollars to recoup the Medicaid dollars that these children are owed, not owed, but entitled to.
Dr. Holliday, do you, what do you anticipate coming out of the focus group?
I'm sorry?
What do you anticipate coming out of the, it says here that we're participating in a DPI focus group to create a statewide standardized data management system in an effort to save fiscal in the future? Do you, do you know anything about that, or what?
Yeah, I, I don't anticipate that being within, within this fiscal year, but that's certainly a concern across the state. Dr. Hickey makes some very good points. The problem is that if we were to do this ourselves, we would not be able to recover the money that we recover, which is where the money comes out to pay the contract. But Dr. Hickey's point is very well taken. It's so complicated to get it that you have to have a third party of some sort. If the state's not going to do it and help us, we've got to have our own party to do that.
And if you make a mistake somewhere along the way, you end up having to go back and pay for, and cost, pay for that mistake. It's kind of sad. We're spending, we're spending a dollar to get three dollars, basically.
Yeah.
Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, approved. Item N. Soliant Health Contract, 2014-15. Appendix W. Dr. Holliday.
Yes, this is some behavioral support funds that we get especially from the state to do this. We can't use it for anything else, so we just ask that you approve it.
Move for approval. Second, either.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, approved. AKIS Incorporated Contract, 2014-15. Appendix X. Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, another special education contract. We are asking that you approve this to support our special education behavioral needs.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions?
Uh, who, what, what does AKIS stand for, AKIS stand for? Does anyone know? This is, according to this, it's a local address. And I'm curious to know how many employees we're employing with this ninety-two thousand.
We, we don't employ employees directly.
I mean, how many people we're paying them? I apologize.
It's a number of hours as opposed to employees, so it could be a various number of employees. It's not to exceed fourteen hundred and fifty-eight hours, so that the hours of service is not necessarily a specific employee, so we're paying by the hour for the services.
Okay. Is this, is this an individual person? I, I, I was just trying to, I don't know, I was just trying to determine what this organization was, and it appears local. Is it an individual? Just in the interest of transparency, I wanted to know. You know, I was kind of looking it up, trying to see who, is this an individual, is this a company, you know, what, what exactly it is, where?
There, there are behavior specialists as a part of this. I believe Julie is two people. Two people is what I understand that work in our school system. So, and they've been with us, this firm has been with us for a number of years, but I understand the firm is two people.
Two people?
The company lists an email that is a school email, newhendrickcountyschools.net is, are they actually, are they just advisors, or?
I mean, Julie can tell us what they do. Go ahead.
It's an agency that employs two staff members, and like many other contractors, they receive New Hanover County Schools email addresses for the ease of communication with our staff. They provide some direct services and some consultation services to our teachers, specific or behavior support that's outlined on the IEPs.
Thank you.
Is there any, is this also a position or that is difficult to, to fill?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, and Dr. Holliday, you're right, this agency has been with the district. When I was a teacher here sixteen years ago, I was supported by this agency when I was in the classroom.
So they go to different classes?
Yes, they serve.
Wherever we need them, really.
Roughly, half of our district, but mostly in our intensive behavior support classrooms.
They've really assisted us through some very difficult IEPs that we, we've avoided some mediation by, by having these folks, behavior specialists or a different breed.
Is there a motion on the floor, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we have a motion in a second. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, approved. Item P. School Cafeteria Equipment Repair. Appendix Y. Mr. Hance.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a equipment repair contract for, and preventative maintenance contract for cafeteria equipment. Request the board approve it.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, approved. Item thirteen, call to the audience. We had no one sign up, Ms. Adams, is that correct, for the second call to the audience? So we'll move to item fourteen.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into closed session, pursuant to NCGS 143-dash-318-dash-11, parenthesis A, parenthesis 1.
Thank you, we have motion. Is there, is these steps seconded? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we are in closed session.